Okay.
All right, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call tonight's meeting of the Town of Foxborough School Committee to order. Tonight is August 24th, 2015. We are going to go into executive session for the first hour. We've got some things to discuss regarding wage and contract negotiations with non-union personnel, as well as the deployment of a strategy regarding school safety and security, which is typically an executive session topic. And then we are scheduled to begin our open session, should anyone be watching at home, at approximately 7:30. At that time, we will entertain any visitors. I don't expect too many on a summer evening. We have some minutes to approve. We're going to do our usual update on all the summer work that's been going on. Marilyn and I bumped into a couple of our custodial staff on the way in together and asked how the summer's going. They said, "Busy."
Yeah.
So I look forward to Tony's update on that with Bill and Aaron. We will do our annual subcommittee appointments, if that's all right. Budget Subcommittee and Policy Subcommittee. We'll then take a second look at our school district goals, and if we're ready, we will approve them for the coming school year. We'll take a quick look at the school calendar, and then we're going to do a second reading of all the policies we did last month. I'm sure we'll be inclined to waive the first reading, because Mrs. Bellinger did such a good job last time, we wouldn't want her to do that again. But we have a number of policies that we're looking at. Internet computer usage, internet acceptable use policy, technology acceptable use policy, educational technologies as it relates to employees, educational technologies as it relates to an employee acknowledgement form, school and district web pages, website guidelines and procedures for approval, and cellphone and all other electronic devices for students. And if I recall, our thought is that we want to get those in place ideally before the start of the school year, before we open. So we'll take a look at those. Discussion on surplus property, specifically Pratt School and Quaker Hill School, a review of school lunch prices, and then other matters. Sound okay to everybody? Did I miss anything? Okay, so, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
So we'll return to open session at approximately 7:30. Thank you. All right, everybody good?
Everybody's good.
Motion to resume our open session.
I'll make a motion to resume our open session.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'm not sure that was exactly the right protocol, but we're back in open session. Twenty minutes behind. I apologize for anybody waiting, but we had a really good and thoughtful discussion on a couple really important topics that will help our school system going forward. So I'd like to thank everybody for that, including Mr. Aaron Hyer, who's helped us with some technology stuff before, and I'm sure will continue to do so. So Aaron, thanks for coming in. Any visitors who want to be recognized tonight? Seeing none, we'll take up our minutes. Which are July 20th special meeting minutes, where we had our retreat at the Chapel Meeting House.
I have no comments.
I didn't see any either. Anybody?
No.
Motion to approve. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five, zero. Thank you. Update on summer work and preparation for the -- you know what? Let me just interrupt myself, which I'm real good at doing. Just as a general comment, I know Mr. Mortimer is not here, but I do want to echo, I think, a lot of the nice sentiment offered by the selectmen, and I suspect the committee will want to do the same about the great service Frank provided, both to the town and to us as a committee. You know, he's been such a supporter and such an ally, and well beyond that, just such a, you know, I say ally, you know, really open communicator. Oh, like, you know, for the public, you know, he'd come up after a meeting to talk to Debbie. Just about, if not every meeting, to clarify his understanding, to really take time to understand the issues and what he wanted to report upon. And I just want to congratulate Frank on retirement and say that we'll miss him. And I personally appreciate, having been at this chair a few times now, just how positive he is for the school system and how well I think he reflected all that was going on, in good times and in bad, and, you know, strength and in weakness, and all things school-oriented. I felt like he always did a fair and accurate job, but I also felt like he was always supportive. So.
I totally agree. I think he always wrote a balanced piece. Frank was meticulous fact-checker. And I just want to say, I know I live in town, but I don't know where I was this summer. I had no idea.
I know.
Oh, he was keeping it a total secret.
On Thursday morning, I drove by and saw the rec department sign saying, "Congratulations on retirement, Frank Mortimer." And I thought, "What?" And then I got the reporter and read it in the reporter. So I guess, thanks to his own newspaper, I found out he was retiring. So I had no idea, and wish I had been a little bit more prepared for that, because he really just always gave it, you know, he always gave everything a thoroughness that we appreciate. And I will miss seeing him riding his bike to all the things he's covering and being here. So I certainly plan on writing him a letter myself. He's a very eloquent person. He's very deep also, and so I do plan on writing him something to express how much I appreciate his thoroughness, even if it wasn't going to be, you know, a celebratory article. He always really took the time, and I think that's rare and appreciated. So I don't know if the committee wants to write anything up, but you let me know. I plan on doing it. I can do it on our behalf.
That'd be great.
I think that'd be fantastic. I wish we had known in July that it was going to be Frank's last meeting with us, so.
He did a great job reporting the news, except for that.
That was a good surprise.
Well, we wish him all the best.
Yes, we do.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for indulging my interruption of myself. So now we'll update our summer work and preparation for the opening of school. Should we turn that over to Mr. Yupman?
Yeah, I'm going to apologize. There was a miscommunication with Tony. That's the only reason he's not here tonight. But both Aaron and I will kind of bring you up on, as far as building in technology. Aaron, you want to come up?
I'll stay right here.
I did talk to Tony today, so I have his short list of things he wanted to say.
Okay, I'll catch them all. From the facility side of things, I think, you know, this was a little bit more quieter year than we've had in the past couple, but we still got some major items completed. Obviously, at the IGO, we are literally just stacking the books on the media center with the asbestos abatement being done, the new carpeting being installed. It's been repainted. The two offices were redone, and the electrical stuff and, you know, projectors and stuff have all been remounted and placed in. It's all been redesigned, as far as the layout of that media center, to be a little bit more user-friendly for the student groups, as well as for the teachers. So that's completed. The parking lot, we were able to take a good advantage of the town's surge bid on paving, and as you can see, that looks 1,000 percent better than it did. It should last us a number of years at a fraction of the cost of what we've been typically doing in the past, so I think we're going to try to continue that program along. But it really, really did make a huge improvement, and I think it will be for the, not only the teachers, but the kids kind of coming back to the school to see that. Here at the turf field, obviously you can see that the lights are up in place. The next two pieces to that is actually us running the piping to a central location, and we're still waiting for Mass Electric National Grid to actually bring the power over to us. I have a feeling we will be done with our side before they get their side done, but we are somewhat at their mercy. We started that process quite a while ago. We have paid our fees for it. We've done everything we're supposed to do, so it's really on their schedule at this point to come and connect to us. I do believe by the time we really need it, over the next month or so, we'll be up and running, so hopefully that's the case. Typical stuff that we normally do, obviously the three gym floors that we use significantly, whether it's for our own uses or for community uses, the high school, the middle school, and the IGO are being resurfaced. And we've been doing that every year, so I think it really makes a big difference on how those floors look as compared to previously, where we used to do it every two or three years.
It also helps with the wear.
Yes, it definitely does. That is part of the thing that stops you from getting down into the surface itself. Energy program, Tony started this actually last spring, and he's finally just gotten to the point where all the demo fixtures have come in, and we've put up samples around. And we'll be going to LEDs on all the exterior of the major buildings, and once we get that fully completed, we'll go down to the elementary levels as well. But you're going to see, like, all of the street lighting that comes up to the high school and the middle school will all be LED, all of the lights on the buildings, and the power usage will be about 10 percent of what it used to be, which would be a great savings, and it will be actually paid through our monthly bill. So our savings will pay for our costs, and I think that's going to be a huge advantage to us. And then, you know, again, the staff, I think, has done a phenomenal job, and it's always the crunch, this was a short summer, from a time perspective. It's even shorter when you realize that we have, you know, four to six weeks worth of summer programs that are going on at the same time. So when we lose a week or two, the staff really has that much less time to prepare the floors, and it obviously will reflect on what Aaron's going to tell you on the tech side, trying to get everything back into rooms as well. So at this point, you know, basically, we're in really good shape. The IGO is pretty much done. Most of the elementaries are nearly complete, if not complete, and we have a few things left here at the high school, which obviously is the one that gets halt to the last because of the amount of stuff that's moving here. And then, you know, just some general maintenance, cleaning and painting, you know, updates that we typically do and try to do while the school's out of session. So I think, again, I think Tony and I think both the maintenance and the custodial staffs really have done a great job this year of pulling it all together for us.
Great.
Agree.
Good evening. On the technical side, I'll start by saying it's really exciting to be here as we gear up for the opening of schools, to talk to you about all of the technical updates and programs that have been implemented over the summer. So in terms of BYOD, as you know, we've been working on updating our BYOD policy and developing a one-to-one computing vision. Wireless network access is now available at all schools, including the elementaries. We are in the process of deploying an additional 200 mobile units, and this is part of our BYOD initiative, as well as our scaling one-to-one computing implementation. So these 200 additional units will allow us to continue to have authentic one-to-one computing experiences with both students and staff, and help us continue to develop our one-to-one computing vision. New computer labs have been installed at the IGO, so the IGO computer lab was actually refurbished, and a new lab was established at the Borough. So in the past, the Borough's had a very small computer lab, and with approximately 12 stations, and students set up along the perimeter. So we've been able to set up a computer lab for them, or more appropriately, a computer classroom, in an environment which is more appropriate for direct instruction on technology and for independent work.
How many seats?
There's 24 stations.
Twenty-four stations.
And one teaching station. Media carts for each building and health and wellness were deployed this summer. The carts contain a DVD player, a sound system, a bright projector, and a laptop computer. These carts allow us to be flexible in terms of our use of audiovisual, and allow us to have equipment that's ready to be used, and is not impacting our ability in terms of teaching and learning time. Discover Video is a project that we've started over the past six to eight weeks. Discover Video, it's a software and hardware implementation, and it's actually multifaceted in terms of what it delivers to us. So firstly, Discover Video acts as a video distribution system, similar to cable TV or cable remodulation. It provides us the ability to rebroadcast information throughout the district. It also allows for teachers to essentially have their own private DVR content, in which they can share that information with students. It also, on the teaching and learning side, has a number of very interesting technologies and features. They're building, they've built a suite around Flip Classroom, which allows Quizlets or quizzes or teaching points to be embedded into a video, and allows for students to be able to actually respond. Other than that, it can be used for live streaming and live broadcasting, so potentially could be used to broadcast curriculum events, such as Technology Night, or graduation, or any other assembly that would be of interest to the community. And we're also working with cable access to talk about opportunities for us to share content, and to be able to really showcase and provide more content for the town's educational channel.
Aaron, I missed, I'm sorry, what you said at the very beginning. Is that a new video distribution system?
It's a new video distribution system. It's a software-based system. One of the unique things about this system, it doesn't require a big expensive investment in set-top boxes, okay? So a number of the other solutions that are out there require these fairly expensive set-top boxes. Discover Video, it works with mobile devices, works with Android, it works with iOS or Apple devices, both Mac and PC computers. But it also has an embedded app on Samsung Smart TVs, and is also compatible with technologies, streaming technologies like the Roku. And that's something else we're exploring, in terms of the Roku Stick. It's a small video device, about the size of a thumb drive, that can be plugged into the back of the projector. It adds wireless capabilities, and it adds a number, the ability to access a very large library of content, such as the Smithsonian Museum as well. But these devices are, they're approximately $30 or $35 apiece. So for $30 or $35 apiece, you could turn them into a digital sign, or a set-top box for this video distribution system. So right now, without the lack of our cable infrastructure, for instance, for the presidential inauguration, we really have limited ability to allow students, say in social studies classes, to view this and take part of this event as part of their class. You know, so we have cable TV access in here, we have it in the cafeteria and a couple of limited classrooms. So this would allow us to actually be able to redistribute content to just about every classroom, as well as share content from within the district.
Before he goes on, I just want to interject. This is a great example of what Aaron brings to the table. This is something he came to us with. So usually, we're coming up with something we think we've seen that we like, and we say, "What do you think?" But this is something he came to us with and said this would solve, this would be a solution for a lot of things we're thinking of, including how to make our website more live, for example. But this is something he came and said this would really, this would do 10 things. And so I think that that just speaks to his value, that he's not just technically responsible for getting everything up and operating, that he is a very forward thinker, that brings ideas and the recommendations to us as the direction we should be going, so.
Great.
Smart Notebook. Smart Notebook is an interactive board or interactive platform, software platform for interactive boards or interactive displays. This year, our Technology Advisory Committee conducted a pilot of three pieces of interactive software, and through the committee's work consensus was that Smart Notebook would serve the district well, in terms of standardizing on a software platform. So one of the things that we've learned is that interactive technology, in terms of hardware, changes so quickly that we really can't keep up. So standardizing on Smart Notebook software will allow us to be able to coordinate professional development activities, and really have a longer life cycle in terms of our product. So it doesn't matter if you're using, you know, interactive product A or B, that you're familiar with the tools and the content in which you need to deliver your lessons. So that's a welcomed addition this year, and I know a number of teachers are very excited about that.
May I just add a moment there of how important that piece is? By having three different software platforms, the implications for professional development have been really challenging. For example, if we want a particular teacher to present a workshop, the answer is, "Well, I have this particular software, so unless I can be in this room, I can't present." So it has really tied our hands. So being able to have a common platform is going to be able to provide greater support for professional development, but more teacher leadership as far as being able to present to other teachers, and will have a greater impact.
Can I ask a question? Just interject there. Will it also help with their own, with teacher collaboration across the board?
They're speaking the same language.
Because I know that was something that we really wanted to address in our strategic plan. It sounds to me that this will help achieve that goal.
Yes, that, as well as some of the other Office 365 updates that you'll hear about.
Yeah, absolutely. And we talk about strengthening our learning communities and our teaching, professional teaching communities, in terms of giving teachers a common platform to work with, to share lessons with. So it's no longer about what board you have. You know, it really does improve our ability to share content.
That's great, because it was one of the identified needs, I mean, over and over again during our strategic planning process by the teachers that were in the group, and the administrators, but it was, it's great to hear that it's being addressed in this way.
And really, this is, this goes hand in hand with everything we're doing in terms of improving access, both to software and hardware, for both teachers and students. Quick update on the long-awaited phone system, so hopefully we're in the final week or so of deliberations. We've reviewed a number of products and really evaluated them in terms of both business continuity or educational operations, so how they serve us, in terms of answering phone calls coming in, but also student safety, in terms of being able to communicate throughout the building in case of emergency, and as well as our abilities to collaborate with public safety around emergencies that involve 911. So hopefully, we'll have more of an update in the weeks to come on that, but we're getting very close in terms of our, starting to be able to facilitate the deployment of our new phone system, so.
I can't wait.
What's that?
I can't wait. That's what I say every time people talk about the phones.
Well, I think the word, actually, you know, Aaron's saying we're close. We're literally down to a meeting on Thursday with the town side to present, you know, the work that Aaron has done. I think we've had three extremely competent and capable vendors that have really fought very hard financially, as well as technically, to come up with the need. I think we are both comfortable with one that we'll be recommending to the town side that, from a cost point of view, is, should have been way out of our reach, but they want the business, and they want Foxborough for some interesting reason. So I think the, you know, it will be a great, it'll be a great resource tool, but we're really that close, so.
Yeah. Be able to, I mean, in terms of offerings, I know I was reviewing some hardware requirements with Bill earlier today, and being able to have things like Wi-Fi or mobile handsets for administrators, or in case of emergencies, or even for health and wellness staff that takes students outside, you know, the perimeter of the building, to be able to have access to the telephone or 911 and things like that as well. So hopefully, we can share some more information with you in the next week or so. I'd like to welcome some new staff. On the technical team, Vern Lee Davis has joined us as a technical and network support specialist, computer and network support specialist. Vern is filling a position that was vacated early this year. Also, Dionisio Gankal, who's serving the capacity of a network manager. Both welcome additions to our team, and I know will help us continue in terms of our growth and ability to collaborate and support teaching and learning in Foxborough, the way that it really deserves to be supported. Also, like to welcome Dan Ambrosio. He will be at the IGO School in the position of Technology Integration Specialist. With the addition of Dan, we've now met a component of Goal Five of our technology plan, of having a dedicated integration specialist at each of the grade levels, so elementary, middle, and high school. So in addition, Dan will serve and assist in meeting many short-term and long-term goals in the five-year strategic action plan. As Amy alluded to, Microsoft Office 2013 Pro Plus and Office 365, we continue to enhance and improve on our offerings in terms of collaboration tools and productivity tools as well. So Office 2013 Pro Plus has been deployed to district computers. This provides us with tighter integration with Office 365. While Office 2013 contains all the tried and true products that teachers and students have been, become familiar with over the past couple of years, such as OneNote, Word, Excel, and PowerPoint, there are a number of new additions this year. So all workstations will have access to Microsoft Access. Microsoft Access is a powerful data tool in which we can use within the classroom to analyze and store data. For design needs, all computers will have access to Publisher, which is a desktop publishing software, and a couple of other enhancements to some older products. Office Mix is an add-in for PowerPoint, which adds interactivity to PowerPoints. That's, you can add the ability to add video Quizlets and have students actively collaborating within a presentation. Also, send to OneNote feature. OneNote is sort of like the three-subject or five-subject spiral notebook in digital worlds. There's a number of enhancements to OneNote, such as the ability to send documents and webpages and screenshots directly into notebooks, as well as Office 365 Groups, which is an enhancement for collaboration. It's a conduit, really, between our email system and our contacts and calendars and OneDrive, and our ability to create documents as well.
I have to say, the one thing about Office 365, when Google Docs originally came out and everybody was jumping on the bandwagon because it was free and it was a solution, and we did look at it, and we were slow because we didn't feel that it had the real tools that were necessary, this community should be very happy that they ended up with Office 365, because the towns that did adopt, the other side of that really don't have the access to all of these tools now that we're able to just roll out day after day. So it's been a huge difference in what's available to the school district, and at a cost that you can't refuse. Obviously, it's just like the Google Docs, it's free, so.
In terms of student email, we continue to roll out student email, and making adjustments in terms of usernames for students, so that they're more in line with our instructional practices. So in the past, student logins have been numeric number IDs, which can be difficult to identify in an address or a contact list, so just reformatting those to meet the needs of our instructional program in terms of Office 365 and the collaboration we're doing. We begin our second year of the High School Advocates. It's really exciting, and last year's team of advocates will continue to stay on, hopefully, as project managers and help assist as well with the program. And last, let's see, I don't want to say "lastly," if it's not at the end. Lastly, we continue to explore Brain Honey, which is an online learning management system for hosting of coursework. So our instructional technology team continues to explore that and create content and publish content there as well. And as we know, there's a number of policy updates that may be approved later tonight, which have been made to really reflect our current infrastructure and our current instructional practices. So in terms of technology, I hope I get everything. I want to thank Julia Greenstein, who collaborated with me to put this information together to share with you tonight, as well as our staff here that will be returning in the next couple of days. This summer has been, has gone incredibly fast. There's been a number of moving parts, and I would like to thank the maintenance team and the custodial team for all their support around getting the building ready and really collaborating with us to get computers back in rooms and technology ready to be used, as well as thank the technology staff who have all worked very hard this summer to make these things happen, and will continue to work hard throughout the year to make sure that things run smoothly.
Thank you, Aaron. That's an exhaustive list for a few short months.
I know.
That's great. That's great. Technology is such a focus right now for us, and you're really reflecting that well, both in your report and all the work you're doing, so. Any questions or comments from the committee?
Great job.
I have a question, and I'm sorry if I missed it, if I zoned out for a minute, I apologize, but did you say anything about the installation of the security cameras?
No.
Okay.
We basically are at the final stages of that, like we are with the phones. We actually got to a point where we had had a number of proposals, and, you know, I will say the one thing that Aaron does better than probably anybody I've ever seen is really beat things up. And when the answers weren't coming out exactly what we thought they should have, we actually reached back to the vendors and had the vendors come in themselves, not even the reps and design. And we have And we have, now we have a, a final design that is being priced. As soon as we receive the price back, we'll make the award on it. But it's actually very different than what we were looking at a while ago because the specific cameras that are now going to be triggered for each location really are individualized for the school, the location and everything. And I think we're both really comfortable, again, that we've now come up with the right solution. So we'll start rolling that out. And again, we'll probably follow the same thing we talked about, high school first, work our way down.
One of the key factors too is, is really today with technology, there's so much integration between systems. And, and one of the things that we, we really wanted to, to understand was the integration between the security cameras and actually our telephony, our telephone system. So there's a number of tight integration, integrations between the two, which provide for, for enhanced safety. So for instance, with, with the new phone system, we anticipate the ability that when a 911 call goes out, which you cannot interfere with, but you can, you can listen, you can listen in or observe. So when a 911 call goes out, that the system will be able to alert a number of people and then the office will have the opportunity to, to gather some information to help them better respond. So for instance, if a student has fallen and there's a medical emergency, they'll, they'll know right away and they can start mobilizing staff, whether it's the school nurse. But they'll also have the integration between the phone system to potentially trigger cameras in, in an area where, where an event is and be able to view them from the phone. So the two are actually really closely related in, in terms of, in, in terms of really getting the most benefit in terms of each, each individual system, making sure that they would integrate well together. So I anticipate we'll be reporting back very soon, probably very shortly after we communicate some more information about the phone system.
Well, I, I really appreciate the work you've put into this and the thoughtful treatment of it in order to make sure we have the best system for our needs here. And, and I know it's taken a while, but it does make sense to get the phones in place and the cameras in place.
And really, the, the card access, the cameras and the phones are so, they're, they're so tightly integrated now, you know, that, that having the right systems really does make a big difference.
Makes sense, but I'm glad to hear that everything is coming together in a timely manner.
So lastly, I guess I would like to say that I, I, I really, it's been a great summer in terms of being able to really collaborate with our instructional technology team to really put forth some thoughtful solutions to really enhance instruction this year. So again, I, I thank them. I, I know that I get to sit here and collect the thank yous, which I will be passing along in the morning to, to, to both instructional technology and technology teams. But really, without the hard work of, of our instructional technology team and our technology, technology support team, this, this couldn't happen, so.
Great. Thank you, Aaron. Really appreciate the update.
Go to you too.
Thank you.
He's been here only a year.
Wow. We've got a tiger by the tail.
Calling it a three in one.
All right, we're going to move on to our subcommittee appointments for the new year. We have a budget subcommittee and a policy subcommittee. And I think the way I'd like to start this is to invite our policy subcommittee members, who've been at it for so long, to decide if they have one more year in them or whether they'd like a change. Ladies.
I am happy to stay on with policy, but I don't want to hog all the fun that is policy. If either Steve or Marilyn would like to do it, I certainly would be happy to do budget as well, so.
Can three of us do it, so I can learn it?
No.
No.
Because you'd need to have two. Two, because of, on a subcommittee, because if there were three of us, then it has to be a public meeting.
But there's something to be said for, it's valuable for someone else to have as much knowledge as Tina and Bevy have built up. But I also think we're in good stead if you guys want to maintain it. It's hard to fix what ain't broke, so to speak. Steve, any thoughts?
I like the budget committee, so I don't know how much value I could add to the policy committee.
You always add value, Steve.
So we have Tina for the policy committee, Steve for budget. Marilyn and Bevy, what would you like to do?
Well, I find Tina a delight to work with, so.
Are you happy to stay on budget?
I wasn't, I didn't know I was on budget.
Well, you are now.
Steve, it's you and I.
Budget is fun.
Yeah.
It is, it's great.
I've never met anybody who loves policy as much as Tina does.
You know, I really appreciate the work that the subcommittees do and having been on them before myself. You know, I, I often am asked by people relatively new to school committee, what is the school committee really responsible for? And it's the superintendent setting the budget and the policies. So we can't do that without people who are in depth on the budget information and the policy. So thank you to everybody in advance for that. Any other discussion on that point? If not, we'll move on to our...
Do we need to vote on that? I don't know.
I don't think so, they're appointments. We can if we'd like.
Have we in the past?
I think we have.
I don't recall, that's why I'm asking.
I think we was, I think somebody's made a motion to appoint and then it's approved, I think.
Anybody want to make a motion for Bev and Tina to be the policy subcommittee members and Marilyn and Steve be the budget subcommittee members?
Well, why don't we take them one at a time?
We can if you want to.
It makes it clear.
I move for Tina and Bev to be on the subcommittee for policies.
Second.
All those in favor?
And I'll move that Steve and Marilyn help us out with the budget committee.
I will second that.
All those in favor? Thank you again.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, school district goals for this year. So for the public, we spent our last meeting spending a lot of time going through our, our school district goals, which typically deal with the same five categories: communication and community relations, student achievement, financial management, policy development, and superintendent's performance. But we do go through them pretty thoughtfully and make minor adjustments based on where we feel we are on behalf of the town in progressing through these five areas. So Deb, I think you, we took our input and prepared a new draft for us.
Yes, so what you see in front of you is, you can see red lines, so it's, it shows the track changes for last year's school district goals and now what it would say this year. If you chose not to continue a particular strategy or, or goal, I guess it's more a goal, then it would have a strike through and if it's a wording change or a focus change. So for example, under communi- communication and community relations, maybe it might be a good idea just to give you a little overview.
Sure.
The committee decided to continue the goal of reviewing the progress in our three-year strategic plan, which is in effect from 2014 to 17, and to do that annually and publish an annual school district report card to enhance community relations and communications. So you kept that goal. You also kept the goal of including teaching and learning highlights and new student involvement initiatives at each regularly scheduled school committee meeting, except for tonight when kids and teachers aren't here yet. So it was, would be hard to have somebody appear and something exciting they've been doing lately. It might involve vacations, beach, maybe some summer reading. On the third bullet, you've always had a goal with homeschool connection, but this has changed year to year, depending on what the focus is and what things have been updated and where you want to go. So the goal for next year reads, "Continue to strengthen and enhance the homeschool connection by updating the district's website and expanding the district's web presence." So that is really our focus, is something we've talked about, it's in the strategic plan. So it kind of dovetails nicely to that. The next goal under communication and community relations is to update and involve parents in the community on important topics of interest to the community, including the plans to complete the outdoor campus and athletic facilities at Foxborough High School. And then you kept the goal, "Continue to maintain collaborative relationships with legislative leaders and continue efforts to enhance Chapter 70 funding and monitor charter school funding formula."
So what I would recall from our discussion a few weeks ago is we really are putting an emphasis here on a new website that the community can look forward to.
Yes.
And enhance, expanding our presence. I think we've had a decent website in the past, but I think we feel like there's, the technology is such that we can improve the functionality and timeliness. And then I, I also recall the, the notion of not only continuing with the superintendent coffees and opportunities to inform the community, but actually, you, you wrote down and involved the parents in the community. So I think we, if I remember right, and please help me, committee, but we talked about what are continued new ways we can think of to engage our, our parents out there. And for those watching and listening and paying attention, we would welcome your ideas and, and feedback. One of the things I think the superintendent does very well is try to be very transparent and thoughtful on issues with the community. So those were the two main updates here. Does anybody remember anything different from our discussion a few weeks ago? No, okay.
All right. In the second broad category, student achievement, the committee struck the, last year's goal of review and approving an updated technology plan, because you have one now. You kept the focus, however, on the technology plan by keeping the majority of the wording in the next goal. Review the details and progress of implementation in the district's five-year technology plan in June 2014 and to update progress mid-year and end of the year. And we did have a lengthy discussion at this table, actually, about what that update should include, what the focus should be, a little bit more, a little bit more objective with data included rather than just a narrative of the things we're working on, so we'll be working on that. You, as always, kept the goal, "Review student achievement data through our annual updates of the Foxborough Public Schools Baselines and Benchmarks Report", which, as you know, occurs every November. And we take all of the measures of student achievement that we value and feel the community should be informed on. And we report that all in one picture to paint the picture of how we're doing in Foxborough and how do we know how we're doing and what do we plan to do about it. Monitor progress and explore ways to measure student engagement for enrichment and challenge within the core curriculum with associated review of budgetary impact. And that update would be in December of 2015. So this has changed a little bit from a few years ago when expanding opportunities for enrichment and challenge was really our collective goal and we feel we've done that. So we have many more clubs and activities available for kids, enrichment opportunities. And the focus of this is really how do we challenge students and get them engaged in challenge opportunities within the regular curriculum, within the core curriculum. Continue to assess special education programs, monitor inclusion practices district-wide that promote achievement goals and literacy, mathematics, and behavior management, and have an annual, annual update in March 2016. So that's when we typically have our special education program update, what's new. To maintain guidance services at all levels with emphasis in 2015-16 on high school offerings which best support academic achievement with review of mental health services, college and career planning opportunities, and school-to-work life skills. So I think the committee's done a good job watching the guidance of mental health services and making sure that we have appropriate services in place and appropriate levels of support. But really putting special emphasis at this level on what's happening at the high school and how do we continue to enhance what we're doing there for that. Continue the curriculum review cycle to support student achievement and to ensure alignment with national, state, and national standards. We do that every year. Expand global connections within the academic curriculum in all schools. This is a new goal that comes from our strategic plan. And you'll see in the strategic plan, the emphasis more on global connections and helping students realize that they're a microcosm in the world at large and that they have a role in the world at large and how are they going to make connections and understand other cultures, traditions, educational systems, and how does that impact them and prepare them more for living and working in that world in the future. So that's a new goal for us. The financial manag-, oh yeah, sorry, discussion.
Yep, we just paused for a second on that section. Any comments or suggestions? I have one. First of all, Deb, I really appreciate your reading and adding your comments there about some of the things we're going to try to do behind the words. Like, hear from Aaron and team some more of the details and progress of the technology plan. I wanted to ask some of those questions when he just went through his list, like, how are we going to get all this out to the teachers and tell us how that's going to work? So I'm glad we're going to do that. You talked about how we're going to move next to the next level of enrichment and challenge to actually measure what students are getting out of that, which I think is right on. Can we just, on the, the point of guidance, would you be okay if we just, you, you said this, but I don't think it's reflected in the wording of our goal. Could it, could it read, "Maintain guidance services at all levels with emphasis in 2015-16 of enhancing high school offerings"?
Oh.
I think you said that, but I don't think that, I think we just make that touch clearer.
With emphasis in 2015 on enhancing...
Yes.
High school, okay.
And I think that just says we're not just going to emphasize it, but we're going to look to enhance it.
Yes.
Is that okay?
That was a discussion.
It's a good word.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Under financial management, the, the basic goals don't change much year to year in this section. I don't think people should expect them to because financial management is such an important part of what we all do, both at your level and at our level. So the, the goals, in the essence, have stayed the same. So ensure the budget adequately supports a district's mission, vision, and goals. And I'll, I'll get back to the, the red type in a second. Review the monthly budget reports, as Mr. Uyghun brings every month. Take appropriate actions, which is to approve it or ask questions, whatever it is you want to do. Continue to meet and collaborate with municipal and legislative leaders on fiscal matters. Continue to work with municipal officials in support of town financial plans. Continue to work with Massachusetts School Building Authority and the community to articulate the needs for the renovation of all schools in the district. I look forward to the day that goal is no longer present.
Right.
Appoint a budget subcommittee to monitor budget development. The difference in this section, as we discussed in July, is that we have, we, at, during the budget season last year, we were here discussing, could we possibly eliminate the fee for full-day kindergarten? We do believe in free public education, we don't have fees anywhere else. It is curious that we're still charging for an academic program and we don't, we're very lucky. I don't know if any of you saw the recent analysis in the Boston Globe about fees. There was a recent one, just in the last few days, about fees and how much people, how much other districts are charging for transportation. Some have lifted the cap for families, so there's no cap. I mean, it was, it was an eye-opener, so if, if you haven't seen it, it'll go to the Boston Globe and there was a recent article on transportation and other fees that districts are charging, but mostly for transportation and what's happening. And the only thing the article was missing was kudos to communities like ours who have managed themselves in a way that they don't charge families all those fees. So it would have been nice if they recognized communities such as ours that, that don't do that. But in, in that context, we do still have a fee and it is for full-day kindergarten. We came during budget season last year with a cost estimate of what it would take to eliminate the fee all in one whack. It was a little bit pricey, it was about $420,000, if you remember. And that was fiscally impossible for the committee to, and for us to accommodate that. But I think it was your comment that we should come up with a strategy for phasing in the elimination of the fee. And, and so that's why you see, I don't know what that is yet, but I look forward to working with all of you on that. It says, "To ensure the budget adequately supports a district's mission, vision, and goals, such as the possibility of offering free full-day universal kindergarten." And I think that is something that we need to take into account as to how we're going to manage that going in the future and what, what, what step do you want to take as we prepare the budget this, this fall? So that might be the, the first thing the budget subcommittee could take up was to begin to consider what you, what you think is a good idea for starting to phase out the full-day kindergarten fee. We haven't gone up in about four or five years on the fee, which is commendable.
Is it 2,500?
It's, it's $3,000. It began at 2,500, back in September of '08, and in seven years, we've only gone up to 3,000. But we are still dependent on the collection of those tuitions in order to run full-day kindergarten. Again, this year, we only have enough for one half-day session in the mid-high teens. So we're seeing very little market desire for half-day kindergarten and we're going to run the one section because we must offer a free option, which is a free half-day. But, you know, I think we, we have to have a strategy for accommodating that. So that might be the first thing you could actually think about before we start our budget hearings is, what, you know, what, what is the committee thinking of doing and what you want to advise us? And then start working with people, we can start working with people on the town side to say, in addition to what we regularly do with the budget, the committee would like us to consider this phase-in plan, which involves X, whatever X is. So, questions?
Everybody good with that financial management set of goals?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Section four is policy development. This also does not change year to year. By April of each year, the committee reviews the policy manual when MASC, the Mass Association of School Committees, advises of potential policy changes. With the help of Mass, this committee and school administration will update individual policies when needed or required by district or legislative mandate. And the second goal, appoint a policy subcommittee, which you did tonight, so actually check that one, to monitor ongoing changes in policy per MASC.
Okay.
And last, under superintendent's performance, your goals are to support the superintendent in implementation of strategy for systemic improvement, the ongoing oversight of the Massachusetts Educator Evaluation System. Why aren't we supposed to take that out? Or do we leave that in? I guess we do lift it in.
Is it, is it ongoing? It is, isn't it?
It is, but we're going into our fourth year. I'm just trying to remember.
As we move toward the teacher levels, is it?
I know, I didn't. We didn't, I, I, I did go through my notes, and I, I matched up what we did to-
Okay.
But, so I don't think we took it out, but, um-
Did we have a discussion though, or am I-
We did talk about it.
And we decided to leave it in?
I think we did decide to leave it in.
Great.
Because we have it as oversight. I think it used to say implementation of, and I think we changed it to oversight.
Last year, I think we did, or the year before when it was-
Because it's well implemented.
Okay, thank you.
It's still a big, big part of your job, so.
So, basically, support the superintendent implementation of strategy for systemic improvement, ongoing oversight of the mass educator evaluation system, and the ongoing development of a high-functioning leadership team. And the last goal, evaluate the superintendent's performance and complete the school committee overall composite evaluation by June of 2016, and the public evaluation by July 2016.
Terrific. I think we captured the essence of our conversation. Could I get a motion to approve the goals with the one amendment of the high school guidance verb there, I guess? Otherwise, as, as amended or as edited?
I will recommend that we adopt as amended with our one word, the school, Foxborough Public Schools School District goals for 2015 to 2016.
Great.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion anyone would like to have? All those in favor, five-zero. I think that's nice work by the committee. I know goals can get a little tedious as we go through that, but I really think they're important. And I know that Debbie and Amy and Bill really do a really nice job as we go through the school year of looking back regularly in terms of the work they're doing and how they match up to what we've asked. So, I thank you for that. I think getting a good set of goals that are consistent but updated, you know, based on where we are in any given year is a, is a really important foundation to what we all do, so thank you. Okay, we have a calendar update.
Yes, so notice we call it update. It's not, it's not a revision. It's not a tweaking. There's nothing changing in the calendar. So, if anybody saw this on the agenda, nothing at all is changing about the school calendar, anybody. Don't worry about that. The only difference is that, as you saw in the spring, recommended and you approved a new elementary report card, which is tri, based on trimesters rather than semesters and quarters. So, the only change that you see here that's different, and it is not requiring a re-vote of the calendar because there's nothing different about the calendar, is you will see two Es on there. You'll see E1 in December, and you'll see E2 in March. As opposed to the other months, which say T1, Term 1, Term 2, Term 3 in April. So, the middle and high school will follow the same traditional term schedule. And the elementaries are going to follow the trimester. So, E1 stands for elementary, end of the first trimester, E2, end of the second trimester for elementary schools. And that is so coded at the bottom.
Yeah, I think that's a great addition. Janet showed that to me. And just for anyone who hasn't heard the background to that, the idea was to give the elementary students a little longer before they get into a marking period or a review of progress, right? So-
Right, because there's a shift to standards-based reporting, and it's more important for students to continue their work and, and collect samples of what they know and can do. And trimesters, every district we know that has a standards-based report card at the elementary that's like ours is now goes to trimesters.
So, really, if this is a new topic to anyone, this is not just a calendar change, a calendar notation really here. But it's really a fundamentally different way we're assessing elementary progress.
It is.
Or at least from a timeline standpoint.
It is. And that was, that was approved here at this.
Any questions on that? So, the first day of school is when?
The first day of school is September 1st. Easy to remember.
That'd be a-
That's for students. First day of school, if your staff member watching, is tomorrow morning. Tomorrow morning.
Staff tomorrow and students a week from tomorrow.
Correct.
Students will report Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, first, second, third, and then, of course, have Friday off.
Yes. So, they'll have a nice long weekend for Labor Day, and then-
And Monday, right. Okay, thank you for that.
All right.
Okay, we're on to the second reading of the policies that Aaron referred to earlier, updating of a lot of our technology policies, in part due to all the good work that's been done in this area. Mrs. Bellinger and Ms. Lord did a great job taking us through these for the first time at our last meeting. So, we'll take a look at the second reading, and is the plan to vote to approve these, if everyone's comfortable with them?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
I have to say before we start that, again, these policies wouldn't have happened without Aaron and Amy putting so much time and energy in them to begin with, before I even sat down with them to look at them. So, we couldn't, couldn't have done them without, with such speed without Amy and Aaron's input. And also Janet, the edits, thank you.
Let's talk about the edits. So, these are, these are really dense and labor-intensive. So, the reality of, of what it took is that Janet got the ball rolling and did the majority of the edits. And then Amy went through all of her hand notes and checked it all and wrote 100% in agreement with hers and, and which ones weren't, little fixes. And then I went through mine and made a few more based on mine. So, it really, these are so dense that it really took three people, going back to the notes from the discussion at the first reading, to get it right.
And I actually went through all of mine line by line today.
So, just to be sure. How did we do, Tina? I'll look forward to seeing it.
I didn't have a single change, so that's, I had to, had to say something.
I, I only have one, one question, and I left it till I'd remember to ask you. And at the end of one, it says, reference Foxborough.
Yes, that is, that's the only question. I went back, actually, when we get to that one, I went to our current policy manual, and that's what the source is for that there.
Just says Foxborough.
So-
And my notes had a blank line with a question mark because we said, what do we mean by that? So, it is very possible that we don't have any references for that policy. I couldn't actually find any. So, I think that actually was typed when maybe people thought there might be a reference a couple of iterations ago, and then didn't put anything in because there wasn't anything, and nobody ever deleted, reference Foxborough. Because the only other place that, what, was, that existed was at the end of the form that we use. It said, reference Foxborough, and I thought, well, that's silly because we made up our own form. So, I took it out of there with fairly good confidence because I had written a delete on my notes. But on the actual policy, I didn't feel comfortable doing it because I might forget to say to you, is there, did anyone have a note on what the reference was? Because we do not have any. So, I think it's a delete.
Yeah, I, I think so too. I think we were going to look at the manual and see what it said, and it doesn't say anything helpful, so. Unless Bev has any historical, you know, input from when the original policy was put together, I, I think.
Well, no, I just, you know, it was just, we weren't referencing anything. We were, you know, Bev's going-
Creating your own.
Right, we had to create everything from scratch and start waiting.
That actually may be it, since it also appeared on the form, the employees' technology, employees' acknowledgement form. I have a feeling that that really meant, reference Foxborough, like, we made it up. You know, it was new, it was new ground, new territory. We didn't get it from anywhere. It wasn't from a C. It wasn't from another school district.
No, and they didn't, they didn't even have a template, a template of what's like.
I have a feeling it could have been legitimately-
Foxborough.
Foxborough.
So, should we take these in, in the order in which they appear?
Yes, please.
And let me just ask Tina and then make a suggestion. Are there any of these that you or Bev feel would benefit from a full second reading?
No.
No.
No, truly.
Thank you.
There are no.
Is he serious?
Yeah, yeah.
I think he was serious.
Wanted to-
We said his role. He must ask.
Following procedure.
Yeah, you got, you got it. You got it across.
You must ask if anyone answers differently, though, this would be a problem.
Therefore, I would entertain a motion from the floor to waive the second reading of these for tonight.
Tina, if it wouldn't offend you, I'd like to move that.
I'll second. I would like to motion that, that the committee consider waiving a second reading of the policies that we're going over this evening.
Okay.
Yeah, I would second that.
Okay.
Gladly. I'm not offended in the slightest, and honestly, you know me, that if I really thought I should read something, I would, I would tell you.
If we do read them, I'd like to nominate the chair to read them.
Bruce has turned the clock, so see, this will work.
He asked for more homework tonight, so.
So, I think we all heard it.
Waiving, okay, waiving the second reading. So, now Tina, if you would just read the policy, and maybe you and Bev in your words, just tell us, remind us what the primary change is that we're making. I think that would suffice.
Sure. The first one is File IJND, Internet Computer Usage, Access to Electronic Media. And our major changes were to conform this to the Children's Internet Protection Act and the Children's Online Privacy Protection Act. So, we took out some language that was really no longer necessary because it, the first paragraph talked about designing, developing, and implementing procedures. We have those procedures, so we could take that, that language out. And the rest of this, you know, addresses internet safety measures and also the need for written parental permission to have access to internet usage.
Aaron, do you want to join us in any of the discussion, or are you comfortable with, will you chime in if you'd like to chime in?
I'll, I'll come up to the microphone.
All right, all right, thank you. Thank you, Tina. So, I think that's a good reminder and summary of what we're doing with this particular policy. Anybody have any discussion? Or interest in motioning that we adopt policy IJND as edited?
I motion to adopt File IJND as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
And I didn't hear any further discussion. All those in favor?
Right.
Thank you.
Five-zero, wait.
Yep.
Next one is File IJNDB, Internet Acceptable Use Policy, parentheses, AUP, Students. And this basically sets out the nuts and bolts of what is expected of our students in the use of the internet and what is and is not acceptable behavior. And trying to think, our changes that we've made here.
See on the next page, I think, if you, you know, per recent discussions.
Right.
We wanted to make sure we were, or you as a committee, wanted to make sure you're really specifically calling out some of, some of the school security measures.
Exactly, yes. So, I, I guess the major change on the second page, you know, discusses that the, the school system reserves the right to monitor local network and internet traffic, including information sent or received through the online connections or stored on our computer system, so. And students should not expect their use to remain private, and that we can modify these guidelines at any time, so.
I think the other thing that you did here was you updated terminology in a lot of cases, right? Reflect more current, sometimes broader-
That is correct.
Category.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
Exactly.
If the committee is comfortable, would somebody like to?
Motion to accept document IJNDB as written and edited for the purposes of this evening's conversation.
Thanks, Steve. Second, Marilyn, thank you.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero. Thank you.
The next policy is File IJNDB-R, which is Acceptable Use Policy Technology Administrative Procedures for Implementation. And you'll recall, we went through these at length in July at our meeting and did a lot of parsing of how, how our administrative team will implement the acceptable use policy. And this sets that out in detail and cross-references our new student conduct and discipline policy. And I guess, are there any questions?
If we look, if we look at what is now renumbered as 12.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
But shouldn't it begin with two, the monitor or examine, two monitor or examine?
It says the district may monitor-
Oh, the district may, okay.
Or examine all system activities, including electronic mail transactions.
I read through you, Bev.
Thank you.
You know, this, this was-
If I read correctly, I, there was just so much red, I didn't catch that.
Steve has a comment or thought.
So, only on this document, everything else I've read, I really don't have any comments. And there's so much cross-referencing, if you will, or overlap.
Yeah.
My questions may be moot, but it's only on this document. Item as written, item 10.
Okay.
Passwords are confidential. All passwords will be protected by the user, not shared or displayed. In the event a user suspects a password has been compromised, they must notify Technology Department either directly or indirectly through their teacher. Should we, or have we covered somewhere else, adding the word? My suggestion would be promptly notify the Technology Department or put some kind of timeline in there. And I guess that question might be for Aaron. I, I'm not sure, but.
I, I-
Just, oh, well, I realized a couple of months ago that, you know, my password was changed or something. I'd, I'd rather that we, we, we note that we want it to be known as soon as one knows, but I don't know.
Could you just reread that again?
Sure, it's item 10 right here. It's just item 10.
Oh, yeah.
You guys?
Yep.
Yeah, so I just said, in the event the user suspects a password has been compromised, they must promptly notify, or something to that effect. I don't know if it's relevant, and I know an enormous amount of work has been done, so that's my throw out on that one.
I guess the way that I interpret it is upon that event.
Yeah, they must.
So, that upon that event, that they-
Right.
-suspect that their password has been compromised, that they must notify.
Okay.
What if we change the word into upon?
Yeah, I, I think we could either change it to upon or add promptly or immediately or urgency.
What do you think, Mike? What do you, what do you like better?
I, I like Steve's suggestion of promptly, you know, I mean, it's-
Because we're their professional, we're professionals, and, you know, they're prof, the staff's professional, so.
I, I think it is implied, but I, I think there's no harm done in, in spelling it out.
All right, well, thank you.
You know, my idea of prompt and, and a 13-year-old's idea of prompt, I find are two very different things, so.
They must promptly notify.
The urgency is-
So, I, I think spelling out some urgency, because we do, I mean, the idea is to make sure our system is as secure as it is.
Correct, to, to really to ensure the integrity and the security of the system.
So, I, I think to add promptly in there is, is a good change. Good catch, Steve.
And then on item 19, and this is, and Aaron, maybe he can help me here on this one too. Any malicious attempt to harm or destroy equipment, materials, data, or programs is prohibited. I wrote in my scribble here, or inadvertent due to non-approved installations or use of non-approved hardware. Has that covered someone else? In other words, somebody brings in a USB and plugs it in, and it's against company policy, and it hoses it, whatever it is, the system, the network, the workstation, whatever. Do we, do we need to clarify that at all? If not, we move on.
Well, I, I think if it's unintentional, I think it, it, it does change the circumstances a bit.
Okay.
So, if it's in violation, if, if what they did is in violation of some other area of the policy or some other policy, there would be consequences.
I'm not trying to catch anybody. I'm just saying, just don't bring in your own hard drive and load it up to ours, you know, like, your Terra, you know, Terra Drive.
It doesn't actually let them do it because they don't have privileges.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So-
That's fine.
They, they wouldn't be able to do something like that anyway.
Okay.
I mean, I can't even get to something that says I don't have administrative privileges, so.
And again, and if I'm overzealous, please rein me in here, folks. My last one is item 23, red 23, okay, red 23, edited. Transmitting or viewing of obscene material is prudent, and this includes any inappropriate or harmful to minors, okay? I threw in the word deliberate because there have been times when the dirty email has gone out because somebody got a virus or something like that, and, and they may not be responsible for such transmission. I didn't know if we wanted to put in deliberate, or, or does it even matter? That's for the policy.
Personally, I don't think it matters because anything that wasn't deliberate and that we approve of that is, it's like I, I tripped and knocked over a computer and shattered the screen.
Okay.
You know, I, I think anything that's not deliberate, we, we know it's not deliberate, and nothing happens, so I think.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah.
Good question.
What do you think?
Let me see what Aaron thinks.
I think, um, yeah, I, I think obviously when we, when we evaluate an incident, whether it was deliberate or not, comes into, into play either way.
Yep. That, that's all I had. I'm sorry to-
No, those are all good points, but I, I-
It's making me think.
Yeah, absolutely. I am, I'm thinking as well.
I'm, I'm motion to approve File IJNDB-R with the amendment of, on number 10, to add the word, they must promptly notify the Technology Department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, five-zero.
Thank you. Thanks, Aaron.
You're welcome. Steve, I think those are all good. I don't think, don't feel bad about- I don't think, don't feel bad about.
You can rest easy, I have no further comments on the other ones, and I did read through them, so thank you, everybody.
It's, it's always good to have another set of eyes, I mean, these are good thoughts.
This is huge. The amount of work you did is huge. It's huge.
Sure is. Good points. The next one is File I J N D B A, Educational Technologies Employees. And again, this updates the language and adds a, adds a couple references to social media.
Mm-hmm.
And just basically updates the language so that it is compliant with our, and this is, actually, this is the policy that the source says Foxborough, question mark, at the end. So I, I didn't know, I mean, I guess my thought was, I didn't know if this was from the Foxborough, you know, the, an employee manual or.
I don't think so.
I, no, it was the, it was the committee.
I think it really was originally created. I think it was an original.
So then this is.
Authorship.
Original authorship.
So do we leave source Foxborough or?
No, I would take, I would delete that.
Okay. Yeah, I would take it out as well.
Debbie, how does the staff get notified of this updated policy?
Okay, so what, Erin can come up, but our, our plan is to have the new employees, educational technologies policy. Everybody signs the old policy upon hire, in fact, even today, people that were coming in today, I have them sign the old one because this isn't in place yet. But now that we have the new one, every employee will have to revisit the new one and be familiar with it. And Erin's plan is to do that online, so that people can do it online and certify that they've read it and they understand it.
And, and contingent to this being approved this evening, both myself and Dr. Berdus will be sharing this information with staff over the, the next three days during the professional development activities.
Great, thank you.
And like the, um, the internet acceptable use policy for students, the one for employees also clearly states that the district reserves the right to monitor local network and internet traffic, and this includes all information sent or received through our online connections or stored on our computer systems. It also, you know, clearly states on page, I guess they're not really numbered, it's the fourth page, and it's social networking, electronic messaging, and phone usage. It clearly states what is and is not allowable by employees of Foxborough Public Schools, and I, I think makes it even more clear than our previous policy.
I agree.
You know, what is allowed.
This is a great example of how, even though it's, I'll admit, it was tedious work for all of you and for those of us then reading and proofreading, but this, this is another great example of the updating of the modern, modern language in order to be.
Yes.
Clear for people.
Exactly.
It's not necessarily all new. For example, the one you referred to, it did, you, this was always in, since 2008, when this was first created, it was in our policy to say that, that the district reserves the right to monitor equipment, services, technology used to access the internet, therefore the Foxborough Public Schools reserves the right to monitor internet traffic, because at the time, that was the phrase, internet traffic, and reserve the right to retrieve and ready any data that's composed, sent or received through online connections or stored in our computer system. And the more modern language, which is a little bit more specific and inclusive, says that we reserve the right to monitor local network and internet traffic, including information sent or received through online connections or stored in our computer system. So it's not a big change when you look at the actual words, but it's just a, a little bit more clarity in using, making sure that we're using a language everybody would understand today.
Right.
The intent hasn't changed, however.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a motion to approve I J N D B A?
I'll make that motion, that we approve I N, I J N D B A.
I second.
Or adoption.
I second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five, zero. Thank you.
I'd just like to note that I did not come up with this numbering, lettering system for these policies.
We're going to run out of letters in the alphabet.
The next one is File I J N D B A dash E, which is the Educational Technologies Employee, Employees Acknowledgement Form. And I don't think we made any changes to it, but I do know that as part of the policy review, all the employees will be asked to sign a new one of these to make sure they are aware of it. So that's why this is included in here.
Right.
We're not really revising it, but I, it would be probably wise to vote on it and have everything dated of the same piece that we've reviewed and approved it as of this date, too.
So will, shall we, a motion to maintain I J N D B A dash E as written?
Yes.
Yes.
Someone, want to make that motion?
I've moved to accept File I J N D B A dash E as written.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Five, zero.
The next one is File I J N D C, and this is School and District Web Presence. And we actually changed the title to, to reflect that we're, you know, going to try to have more of a web presence, not just a webpage, but also presence through social media, and this responds to that endeavor, desire, so.
Motion to accept I J N D C as written and presented tonight.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those, oh, discussion? No, you're just ready to vote.
Oh, we're ready to vote.
I thought you might have more discussion.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Five, zero?
Yep.
Five, zero. Thank you.
I read all these several times.
There's a lot there, but it is, it's, it is really important, because I mean, look at all the, the.
Thank Amy and Erin.
Absolutely. I continue to thank them, it's a ton of work. The next one is File I J N D C dash R, Website Guidelines and Procedures for Approval. And this really talks about the web pages that our children, our students, will be using in school and how they get approved and how we're going to use them to, as teaching and learning tools. One thing I did note, it, this, I don't know what happened, but it should say on the second page, the heading is Consistent Standards. I, I don't know what that is.
No, it looks like they crossed off.
It used to say consistence.
Oh, it used to say consistence, and now it is, so it is correct.
The C E is what's, yes, the C E is crossed off.
Reading glasses, need reading glasses now.
The, the old one.
I say exactly what we did, yeah.
Whenever that was, wasn't caught, it used to say consistence standards as a typo.
And now it's going to say consistent.
It looks like two Es, but it's actually a C E that's crossed out.
It kind of looks like the word consist neat, which is kind of a cool word.
It is a cool word.
You see, I knew it in the sentence.
Motion to accept I J N D C dash R as written and presented this evening.
I'll second.
All right, and the chair just has to have one moment of discussion, but just remind me, so we struck the idea that a school form a committee of interested individuals for the development of the website, because I was thinking that we now have.
We have a website.
Or do we have one?
Right.
Correct.
That was, that still stayed in there when the policy was created, when you didn't have a website. So that's, that's the striking of archaic language.
Okay. All those in favor of approving? Five, zero. Thank you.
All right, and the last, the last one, this is a brand-new policy, and it's File I J N D D, Cell Phone and All Other Electronic Devices, Students Bring Your Own Device, B Y O D. And you'll remember that we piloted this last year as wireless came up in all of our schools, and so now we've had it for a year, and Erin and Amy wrote a workable, you know, policy to govern the use of cell phones and all other electronic devices in school, because now phones are more than phones, they're tiny little computers, and our kids can use them for all kinds of educational purposes. So they used to be banned, they're not banned, now they're welcome, that's what this is all about. And I don't think we need to reread the whole thing, I think we made a few minor changes in the language at our last meeting, but other than that, I think it is very helpful.
So just before we vote on this one, I think this is a real timely topic, and maybe it's not a bad idea to just spend an extra minute, just for anyone watching or following the meeting. Erin, in terms of the ability to use devices, or Amy, in, in school now, Tina just said it's okay for kids to bring their cell phones and the devices, in a classroom, is that subject to the teacher? Is that, can, can, do you want to just, would it be good maybe to just talk about what it is?
It's really, um, there's a, it's really a couple of different things. So in terms of the bring your own device policy, sometimes it's been referred to as the unbanning of cell phones. There is a lot of teacher discretion involved in terms of what's appropriate, in terms of the instructional environment. So if, if students are maybe watching, you know, a film or, or engaged in, in lesson, devices may not be allowed. And in terms of, we're beginning to develop the, the pedagogy in terms of the, the terms and, and the cues in terms of when devices are allowed and not allowed. So there is a lot of teacher discretion involved.
So in this policy, for example, it does not say students must lock up their phones in their lockers or cannot use them in school, this is now a subject to a teacher, subject to a learning environment at any given time in the school day.
No, so this, this policy really is a district policy or even a framework to provide some consistency throughout the district in terms of B Y O D. But it does, it does redirect you to each school's student handbook in terms of defining appropriate usage at the, at that, that grade level. So the high school handbook, for instance, defines times when it's appropriate to use devices, such as in the cafeteria, you know, or, or certain times of the day.
So if a student or a parent has a question, they should go back to the school handbook?
Correct, correct, so.
That's captured a paragraph, too.
Yes.
Yep. So at the district level, this provides kind of a consistent framework, and then within the school handbook provides age-appropriate or educationally appropriate information in terms of that, that particular environment.
And then lastly, just stating some of the things that I read here, just for, again, anyone who's interested, this also talks about things like the school system will not be responsible for loss or damage, which I think is fairly common sense, but also it talks about the use of the device for photographing, video, audio, et cetera, those all must be approved by our school system, by our policies.
Correct.
And Bruce, I'd just like to interject there, too, that it all, all of your device usage has to be in accordance with the acceptable use policy that we put in place for the internet and use of school computers. Same policies apply, same.
Good point.
Same policy applies to the use of the device. So if you couldn't do it on a school computer, you can't do it on your tablet or phone or laptop.
This goes back to, in terms of all the work we're doing around digital citizenship, in terms of teaching students how to use their devices, both, you know, instructionally or educationally or academically, and preparing them for, for the workplace or for college or for whatever their next step is.
One other point I wanted to remind the public of is when we were going through the pilot program, Amy did talk to a lot of students at both the middle school and the high school level, who said they preferred to bring their own devices as opposed to having like a one-to-one system where we gave everybody an iPad or something.
That was me, my student focus groups.
Was that you? I'm sorry, I thought it was Amy, but.
No, I had the student focus groups.
Yes.
Yeah, some of them differed.
That's, that's what I was trying to pull out.
I think the easy answer was, some of them said, you know, just give us all the same thing, but most of them said, don't, because we like what we're used to at home. I like using my cellphone, my friend likes using his, whatever, and, you know, a third girl might say, no, I like this device, and my parents provide one. So they do prefer the flexibility to use the device they're most familiar with or comfortable with.
Well, and that student input has guided this policy development, so that's what I wanted to do.
But they don't have to, that's really key, they don't have to, they don't have to bring a device to school.
Right, no.
That, that's really important for parents at home to hear.
That is, that's right.
They do not have to.
No.
But if they want to, here are the guidelines.
Right.
To a part, that's what we're doing in terms of our deployment of mobile devices is, is really being able to provide students with options and choice. So some students may choose to bring in their own device or use their own device, and other students may choose to use one of the school-owned mobile devices, depending on what the activity is.
Thank you for just articulating the policy a little bit out loud, because I think it's a real relevant, current one. Motion to approve I J N D D.
I motion to approve File I J N D D as it amm, as it is amended.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Five, zero. Well, Tina, Bev, Erin, Amy.
Amy.
Janet, Julia.
And Darlene.
And Darlene.
Yeah.
Great job. And just in time manufacturing, right? Just in time for the opening of school.
Yeah.
Yes, so actually, we want to thank the committee for agreeing to start the first reading in July and finish it up in August, because we really do need to start the school year with these in place. So we really appreciate your putting the timeline on a short leash.
Just, I don't mean to belabor this B Y O D, cellphone, device policy, but just one more idea that pops in my head, could or bad, I don't know. Do, should we, do we need to do more to put this out to our parents and students?
No, because they get it during the back to school, the, the schools take, the schools do a good job talking to kids about their responsibilities, what happens, they, they take that responsibility, so.
Schools are doing fine.
I, I think they really take responsibility for, for a lot of it. I think if we wanted to, I don't know, what, what would we need to do, do you think? That's a question.
I haven't heard questions personally.
The only question I heard is, people would say to us often, what is your policy for bring your own device? So I think the fact that we now have one that we can refer people to is what, what I've heard the most. So that's why I appreciate their work, because now we have a policy to point to.
So they could call, they could call the superintendent's office and get a copy of the policy.
Absolutely.
They could look at the school handbook and get a copy, go to the website and get, okay.
With the pilot program at the Ahern, I know we had to sign something for bring your own device. Are they, are we still?
They do it every, yeah, they did last year.
I know we still have to sign for the acceptable use policy, and we'll sign, so that they, they, you're going to be getting a copy of it and you'll have to sign that you acknowledge it.
Teachers are also communicating their expectations around the use of technology within their class.
Yep.
Because it, it does differ from, from class to class. So parents and students are well-educated on the policy, and then teachers also do a great job at communicating what their classroom expectations are as well.
Good. Thanks, Erin.
Thank you, Erin.
Okay, two more topics, surplus property, Pratt School and Quaker Hill School.
Okay, this is, I'll do this quick, this is actually just housekeeping. These are two properties that were under the control or are under the control of the school committee. I truly believe something was done years ago, but there's no record on the town side of this. The town has actually used it from the town side, they used the, the Quaker School as a storage facility for a while, and they actually rented out the Pratt School. But in order for them to move forward, we really need the school committee to release these properties as surplus properties. The Pratt School is off of Coquassus Street, just past the burr. Community Way is a small street on the left-hand side, literally right after the burr, and if you go up there, the building was used as a karate school just recently, but it's really in bad shape in the town, along with some of its other surplus property needs to make a decision on how they want to deal with this.
Can, can I just interject something that's simple, but it might help a little bit if people are watching? People are thinking, what do you, what do you mean, you have to release that? Why do you even own it? Because they do know that our current schools are owned by the town. Town built them, they own them. That's what people would say.
But they're owned by, they're actually run and managed by the school committee.
Right. Right. So, these buildings haven't been heard of in years, and the most recent documents, even though it was a long time ago, say that we own them.
The school.
Even though anyone driving around town would think the town owns those buildings. So, people are probably wondering why we're even talking about these buildings. That's why. The owner of record is still the school department.
And, and any property owned by the town in, in its different groups, whether it's conservation, recreation, or a school department, once that department no longer has a use for it, conservation's a little different, but once the department no longer has a use for it, you have to do this vote basically to create a surplus, which then puts it back into the town side. Other departments then have a right to say they have an interest in that parcel, for whatever reason. And if nobody comes up with a use for it, then the Board of Selectment has the right to take it to town meeting to say they want to dispose of it, or, or, you know, make other uses of it. So, but until the school committee, until there's a vote that's on record that basically says these two properties are definitively not properties that we use for school purposes, then nothing can happen. That, that's what can't be found right now, is those votes. So, the, the Quaker School is at the corner of South and West, it's that little white building. Again, it's all boarded up, there's no windows that are, you know, you can see through, it's, it's in, also in need of some work on it. So, I think, you know, again, it's a parcel that the town can make other arrangements to deal with, but we have no interest and no use for either one of these.
There's probably some sentimentality of some of our residents who spent some time in some of these buildings, I imagine. But you're right, I don't think they're currently needed by the school system today.
Well, if the historical commission had an interest in them, then this would free them up, so that they could come forward and say, we want to rehab them, we want to, whatever, put them as historical places.
Yes, because some people do think the Quaker, the Quaker Hill School is an historical property, but that certainly is for somebody else to.
That's not within our purview.
Not our, not our expertise.
Unless you're feeling particularly sentimental tonight, you can enjoy it.
The Pratt School at one point was used, I know, for rehearsals for a small, small community theater group, and they had a lot of storage in there for a while.
Steve?
Two questions. As we give this back as surplus, if that's the board's will, have we been, as a school committee and managers of the property, incurring any costs of those, and now as they go away to surplus, will they go away and we get that sort of money back?
No, and that's why it's, this is kind of an interesting thing. The town literally has been using it, renting it, taking the money, and dealing with the issues around the building for years. That's why it's kind of odd that we can't find a vote of a school committee.
Is that why they asked us to do this? Is that what the genesis of the action is? I'd like to motion that we move the school committee to declare the real property identified as Pratt School on Community Way, map 97, parcel 2933, and the Quaker Hill School on South Street, map 162, parcel 4101, with any improvements thereon, to be no longer needed for the school or educational purposes, and that the committee so notify the Board of Selectment of its action for purposes of further disposition of said properties as the selectmen may deem appropriate.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill. Full lunch.
Full lunch. Annually, basically, we, we do a review of our, our pricing, and part of this is, not part of this, this is tied to what we receive in federal and state reimbursements. As you know, the part of the program that the school department puts out in advertising to families in town, that if they qualify because of state and federal grants and funding, you know, families that are, meet a certain threshold financially, can get assistance. And that assistance is obviously supported by the federal government. A family might qualify for children to have a free lunch, or they might qualify for it to be a reduced lunch. The, the analysis we have to do annually, and the actual federal government has a calculator that we use, and I supplied a copy of it within your package. Basically, what it's doing is looking at what their rate of reimbursement to us as a community is, and making sure that our fee that we charge others is not so low that they're actually supplementing the cost. In other words, they want us to stay comparable, and therefore that, you know, what they're paying is, is equal to what, you know, a family that is capable of paying, does pay. And in this particular case, when you, and you have to do a weighted average, so it's based on how many meals we sell on the, you know, the elementary level, which is currently at $2.50 versus how many meals do we sell at, at the high school level, which is 2.75. The average came out to 2.65. Based on their calculator, we would need to be at least at 2.70 to meet the minimum guidelines. What I'm recommending is that we bump it instead of by five cents, by 10 cents, which is the cap, it's the maximum that you are required to do. You can always do more, but the, in order to start to get to their standard, they, they say that you never have to do more than 10 cents in a year. My opinion is that we were about $1,500 shy of break even last year, it was very close. It's the closest we've been in a number of years since they changed the regulations on what we can serve. Obviously, we lost all the snack foods, which the kids like to buy, and spent a lot of money on. But with all the nutritional foods and stuff that we sell, the, it took a while, and I think Allison and her team have done a great job as far as creating better menus and better options that, that the kids seem to enjoy, and are interested in buying. So, we got very close last year, but we still weren't there. So, I think instead of just going up to five cents, if we go up to 10, hopefully, we won't have to have this conversation for at least two years. And I think that's what we did last time. Actually, last time, we went up by a quarter, and we were able to go for almost three years, you know, without having to raise it. So, I think that would bring us up on the elementary level to 2.60, and it would bring us up to 2.85 on the middle school and high school level. And again, you know, right in line with what I'm seeing in other districts in our area, I think, you know, some have made the jump by a quarter, and I think it's not necessary at this point, so.
Why was there such a big deficit of $23,000?
Because we lost a tremendous amount of participation. When the food, when they changed the size of portions, when they changed what we could actually serve, when they took the sugar contents down, salt contents down, when they stopped saying we could just serve chocolate milk, you know, when they did all these things.
You can't even, you can't even serve chocolate milk.
Well, now there's a, there is a nutritional equivalent version, which doesn't taste like chocolate milk, but that, that we could actually serve. So, they, they made a number of changes.
People buy it.
Not many. That's where we got it to the fruit smoothies, which was a great option, because it not only brought in the yogurts and the, and the fruits and vegetables and stuff like that into the drink, it, it made it something that the kids actually would enjoy again. And that really was huge. The salad bar was an amazing turnaround in both the middle school and the high school. The kids really loved that. So, again, those things actually brought the participation back up. We had that one year that they really, you know, if you remember, you know, the, you know, 200-pound football player got a little piece of, of chicken on the plate, and that was supposed to sustain him for the day, that didn't really fly. So, that created a lot of issues on the participation side, and I think, I think Marilyn actually spoke back then because of her son.
Hopefully, not 200 pounds, he's working on it, but not even close, sorry.
But I think the, so I think from, from our perspective, participation's back to where we want it to be. Pricing needs to be adjusted to, to meet the minimum on the federal standards, but if we go up just a slight amount, might give us a little cushion in the account. We used to actually have a, a nice little surplus in that account, which helped us to buy equipment and stuff like that. Right now, we're basically.
And refrigerators and everything.
Yes.
Making up for it.
Right now, we've been making up for it on the school budget, as we move forward, when, when things break and we need replacements, so. So, I think, again, I think this will, you know, cover us hopefully the next couple of years, and not have to make the same adjustment again next year.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
I will make the motion to approve the increase to 2.60 for elementary and 2.85 for middle and high school for lunches.
I second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero. Thank you, Bill. Other matters?
I'm going to be brief. Welcome back to staff tomorrow morning. You have in your packet, you were discussing it earlier, the PD schedule for next three days, including the schedule for tomorrow morning for opening day, so I always look forward to welcoming all of our staff members back on opening day. It was a fun day. And then also included, among other things, in informational matters was a letter from the Department of Ed, saying, if you remember, we had the coordinated program review, which is quite lengthy for civil rights, ELL services, and special education, which we had a full report here last year. Title I was a separate review, and so I want to just extend my thanks to Amy and Diane Casili, who serves as our Title I director, for completing the Title I review, and they passed the review with flying colors, and we have no action items or areas to address. So, congratulations to Diane, she does a great job running that program.
Oh, come on.
It was a short summer, welcome back.
It was.
Amy?
Just in combination with this, the ELL, English Language Learner Coordinated Program Review, we're still waiting on the final report from them, so that one we'll bring back as soon as we receive it. It's done, we've seen a draft, but we're still waiting on that one. And then really looking forward to coming back in our professional development days that are coming in the next couple of days.
Yeah, you always do such a great job with the program. I mean, I, I wish everyone could see this, I mean, it's, it's a really neat program. A lot of work.
I mean, her team do a wonderful job. It's, it's pretty robust, and it's meaningful, and the sessions are important and timely and very thorough.
And I think to the workshops that are there, we had a very extensive professional development survey that went out in the spring, and we're using that data to really drive based on the needs of the district. So, where you see the Office 365, out of the 12 top workshops are actually content areas that came out, eight of them were related to Office 365.
Oh, my. That's great.
Anything else, Amy?
That's it.
Bevy?
Just welcome back, and have a wonderful year.
Yeah, that's right.
Any challenges?
I, I can't remember if we talked about it in July, but I know you visited our PCC students at Stonehill, and I have had great feedback from, from a friend of mine whose daughter attended PCC, and I can't wait. I hope that those kids are going to come and be one of our teaching and learning highlights, because I know they had a phenomenal experience there.
They did, so it was nice to have the visiting day where we got to go and see them, and I was able to find all the kids, and just to see them just forging those relationships, following something they love, their passion about, and finding other kids who have the same passion, and the mentors and the faculty they have there are tremendous. So, we had kids doing all kinds of things. We had one in forensics, we had a couple in the theater program, so I hope that that grows. Usually, they're the, they're the leaders, so the four that went this summer, we thought we'd have five, we end up with four. We'll spread the word, I'm sure, and we'll have more kids going next year, but I'm really glad that we joined that program, and that they had that, such a terrific experience. It's great.
Good. Anything else?
I actually saw, one other thing I wanted to share, that the Foxborough Dollar Tree Store donated a tremendous amount of school supplies, and they are available to anyone who wants them at the Public Safety Building in the McGinty Room.
Really?
Yes, so I know our discretionary fund does a wonderful job doing their backpack drive, but, and, and we have many, many, many generous businesses and, and individuals who help with that, but I just happened to see this on Facebook, so if anybody needs school supplies, thank you to the Dollar Tree Store, and go down to the Public Safety Building tomorrow, I think between nine and three, they said, so you can pick up some school supplies.
It looks like they still had a lot left, we're kind of surprised because they started last week.
The discretionary fund, those people work so hard. I know they have a team there, but in particular, you know, obviously Lisa Downs is heavily involved, but Judy Shilts and Louise Sullivan do the majority of the work on the backpacks, and I think they did over 150 backpacks for Foxborough students this year. And they, they really tailor it to what the student's going to need for that teacher, that grade level. They do tremendous work over there, and they're unsung heroes in our town.
Wow, what a great story.
They are.
That's all I have.
Steve?
One happy thing and one clarification that's not a bad thing, but the clarification is, there is, and there are multiple news outlets in our town, so without naming it, one outlet electronically posted that the first day of school, and it's still on, I, I saw it, is the second. That is not true. School starts on September 1st. September 1st is when school starts. So, just wanted to clarify that, because it is a widely-read electronic news source for the town. And I'd like to thank a gentleman named Jim Kelly, as well as some people, the, the students and parents of Troop 32, the Foxborough Rotary, the Foxborough Lions, and the Alumni Association of the Burrow School. Principal McCarthy and some families, some nice people spent last Saturday spreading wood chips around the nature trail, getting ready for the Burrow School's opening, and there was some nice work done there, and, and there's still a little to continue, but probably 95% of the work that had to be done got done, and there were a lot, a lot of community involvement, it was all volunteer, volunteer, and Jim Kelly is a nice gentleman who worked with Michelle McCarthy and, and reached out to several organizations, and put a nice group of people together, and those that went got a free bottle of water on a hot Saturday. So, thank you to everybody that did that. That's all I have.
That's a good one, Steve, thank you. Marilyn?
For anyone who's new in town, if you see a bunch of male teenagers with blarange hair, a little blonde, a little orange, those will be our senior football players. It's very attractive.
Bill?
Nope, I'm good.
Janet?
All set, thanks.
All set? Well, thank you, everybody, for a good meeting, and welcome back. Not that we all really left, but welcome back. Wish everybody a great school year. It's nice to see our, nice to see our band out there, and our football team, and our soccer, and everybody else who's back in the swing, and teachers, I bumped into some teachers in the high school last week, getting their classrooms ready, so fun time here.
I'm looking to see, will we see you as a regular from the Foxborough reporter?
There's supposed to be a new reporter starting September 1st.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for covering tonight.
Thank you for seeing you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Night.[1761.12]